Thank you, Kevin. Item 4A, update regarding the Osmond Pioneer Day Celebration held July 23rd and 24th, 2015. We have Donnie Osmond here.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember. Good to see you guys again. Mark, good to see you. I don't think we've ever met yet. Yes, this year was probably one of the funnest we've had yet. This is our fourth annual Utah Pioneer Day. And I think I've put that back. There we go. A big thank you from our family, the Osmond family, of course, over 175 cast members, young kids ages four to 23. Thank you for letting us be part of your family again this year. It was phenomenal. It was wonderful. We love sharing the pioneer legacy with you guys. I know Ben was there. I saw him there. I don't know if any of you guys had a chance to come and see it this year, but it was one of the best we've had yet. It was awesome, and the feedback was amazing. The governor has always been a part of this every year, and this year he wanted to put together a video to be a part of it. If we can show the video from the governor, that would be great. Maybe I can download it for just a little bit. Try that again. There we go. And if you can't hear that, then you need to go get some new hearing aids. I think he needs some. Anyway, it was great to have his support from the governor. Senator Owen Haas was also a part of it, and it really needed to have their support. I thought we -- I put together this quick little one-minute video of just some of the highlights of this year. We, of course, the drone is becoming very famous nowadays. We had a drone. We had two drones to film this. That was cool. I just need to see. We had a lot more footage of even the City Hall building in the background. That was kind of cool. So basically, every year, we honor wonderful Utah pioneers, modern-day pioneers. This year, we honored Dick Motta. I don't know if you guys know him. He was a very well-known NBA coach. He lives right here in Utah. So we honored him as well as Mark and Sally. They're the owners and the founders of the Hale Theater over there in West Valley. Great, wonderful people. So over the last four years, these are some more people that we've brought here to West Jordan City and that we've honored, along with the Miller family, members of our family, Governor Bengler, Gene Fulmer, who's right here in West Jordan. So it's been really neat to be a part of that, having part of the pioneer legacy. We always do the pre-show. We've got the five teams in from St. George. We bring lots of local talent. Lots of fun. Again, the thing that's so unique about this, it's a youth production. It's not an adult production. It's a young kid. It's what's unique. It attracts the family. Good, clean, family entertainment. Again, about 175 young kids that participated this year. Most of them from right here in West Jordan, as well as South Jordan, Hermit areas, but everybody pretty much on the west side of this valley. One of the things that we're so proud of is our Native Americans. They bring in such a wealth of talent and color. If you haven't seen the show yet, they're just so beautiful. Again, we don't ever do a show without fireworks. That's kind of our signature thing. And it's not just a fireworks show. It's synced in with the music, so throughout the whole show as well as at the end of the show. We decided, we were talking about this last year, we thought we'd try to do it as a free admission, and as a result, we exceeded our capacity, which was awesome, which was neat. And that's what we want. We want to bring people from all over the valley, right here to your beautiful town of West Jordan. Of course, we always get back, and every year, we help 10 local families. So four years, we've now helped 40 families with the gift of hearing. So we appreciate that, letting us be a part of that, and thank you for helping us carry the legacy of our pioneers here in West Jordan. So thank you, guys. Appreciate you guys very much. We hope we can do it again. We love you, guys. We think this is a great partnership. We felt like we've built over four years. I think we've come a long way, and we'd like to keep the dream alive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin. Communications? City manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Several of you have asked me to look at the budget and how it exists and the readability of it and if they will understand it, and we've made several changes to it that you'll be seeing. I think it's important for you to know, when you see a budget from the city manager, what the department had actually asked for, so you see if it was cut or added to or what. So you see that line of expertise get to you in that format. Obviously, the department has budgets, will not be balanced. Mine will, and then you can do it as you want. Also, we'll be having monthly financial reports, written, hard copy if you'd like, and then we'll still have a rather quarterly report as well, and that also will be in a different format that's a little bit easier to read. I've given you a copy of the parking plan out back where the trees died. I'd like to move that project forward. There are a lot of trees I'd like to plant this year and then finish this project off first thing in the spring. So I'd like to bring it forward as a change to the budget. It'll be about $200,000, but, you know, we'll be losing 48 spots once the other building is done and the spring's back 52. So, and Bryce has some announcements also.
Bryce?
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know about some events that are coming up here in the very near future, and we always appreciate your participation in these events. The first one is the Chosen Half Marathon, and 5K will be starting and ending at Ronwood Park this Saturday morning. The route takes along the Mountain View Trail and crossing over the Mountain View Corridor, and access to the park will be limited during the morning hours to keep runners and spectators safe, so it just lets people know to watch out for that. The Thrill Seeker Stunt Run, in conjunction with the Wheel and Jazz 5K is setting up in Veterans Memorial Park. If you've seen all the equipment out there in the park, it'll be this Saturday. Heat starts at 8:00 a.m. and go every 10 minutes until 3:00 p.m., and at 3:30, the public is invited to purchase tickets and try out the stunts for themselves if they want to go for that. I also understand that they will be doing cheek swabs that will allow them to take information that can help with those who want to help with bone marrow transplants and things like that, so it has a good purpose publicly, and they are paying for the park also. Number three, our first Enduro Cross will be in the arena this Saturday. The track will be open for practice on Friday night from 4:00 to 9:00. Time trials will begin Saturday at 2:00 p.m. The event starts at 7:00 p.m., so if you, as councilmembers, want to contact Julie if you need tickets, and there will be no VIP seating or skyboxes at this event. The next one is the Jordan Oaks. ODS Steak is having a 5K run this Saturday from 8:00, starting at 8:00 a.m., and it will be in the neighborhood of around 8117 South and 3900 West. So just warning people to be careful when they're driving in that area. And my final comment is, as many of you know, I will be leaving West Jordan City to start a new job in Cottonwood Heights on the 5th of October. I want to thank you as a council for the opportunity that I have had to serve here with you. I want to thank our staff tremendously for the support that they've given me during the last year and obviously before that, and I can't tell them how much I've appreciated how well they have stood together and to make sure we performed as well as we have, and I want to thank them. And then last of all, I want to thank our citizens in this great city for their support and the opportunity to be a servant to them. So thank you very much.
Darian?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. David Oka.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Brian?
Just a couple of real quick things. With the $4 million bond, work is underway. First set of nine playgrounds are started, the installation work with those. Ocker Shadows are the first areas to receive those, and they've started the construction. Also, Teton Estates and Jordan Metals Park, the tennis courts are in process of being resurfaced. So if you get questions, feel free to send them to me, and I can fill the residents in if they have questions. Thank you.
Brian?
Yes, just to remind the council, I think I've talked about this before, but our annual audit will be starting the first full week of October. I believe that's October 5th. We'll have the auditors in here. They'll be out for a week, and then they'll be back in here for two weeks. So the finance department is working very hard to get everything ready to go for them, and we definitely hope to have the CAFR2 sooner than we've had in years past. Thanks.
Thank you. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. An update on four different items. We've begun the closeout on 5600 West, the north section between 7800 South and 63rd South. We're closing that out and determining our budget for the next phase of 5600 West between 7800 South and 8600 South. We'll be working through the winter on the design, the pre-design of that project to begin completing that final phase of 5600 West. And then a couple other issues. Over the last couple of weeks, we have had some issues in 7800 South and about 3200 West, where we had a sinkhole develop from an irrigation pipe that collapsed in the road. Luckily, we were able to catch it and cover it up before anybody was hurt with it, and we were able to go through and fix that sinkhole. The worrying part is that about a week later, another sinkhole developed not too far from this. We've TV'd that line and found the pipe in very, very poor condition, so we'll be bringing back a request to expedite that project to help avoid any problems that may arise on 7800 South. Also, we've had a problem with Bateman Pond. Bateman Pond, we discovered about a week and a half ago, was leaking water through the downstream outlet structure. We were able to, we contacted the state engineer's office. We've been working closely with them and with the design team that was part of the construction of the dam in 2011, and we have been drawing down the dam both naturally and unnaturally to try to help dry out the area, to begin investigating the cause of the leak, and then to begin repairs on that dam. We hope to be able to get that done as fast as possible, but we may not be able to fill that pond back up for a couple of weeks while we get those repairs fixed. And then the fourth project I wanted to give an update on is our LED streetlight project. I know there's been a lot of interest in that. We've run into a number of unexpected delays from the suppliers that have been providing samples to us. This next Tuesday, we will meet as a selection committee to review all of the proposals, the final proposals, to make a selection for the LED streetlights for the city. I just wanted to let you know about those. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Couple of quick questions. Bateman Dam, you mentioned the design work for this was completed in 2011. When was the actual dam itself completed?
In 2012. It was completed the next year.
Okay. And do we have an estimate on what it's going to cost the city to repair that?
We don't. We don't know the cause of the failure yet. We don't know whether or not it was a soil failure or rodents that got into the dam or we just don't know. And so we'll be going in in the next week or so. We'll begin on Monday. We have a plan that Bowen Collins has prepared for us. They were the design engineer on the dam in 2011. The state has signed off on that plan, and so we'll be going in on Monday to begin trying to investigate the cause of the leak.
Off the top of your head, do you know what the total cost was for that project?
I don't.
Okay. And then I assume we'll be getting a report after saying what conclusions were found?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Does that dam have a chimney drain in it or not?
It does not have a chimney drain. It has a kind of a foundation drain that's built into it that there's a 12-inch perforated pipe wrapped in fabric impacting gravel about eight feet below the soil, and that's how the pond drains. It's an opportunity for us to improve because we found that over the last couple of weeks it's been difficult to drain the pond when we really want to, and maybe one of the causes that water has found an alternative path through the dam.
Was that it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief McRee?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just wanted to update you. Our Utah Fire, our Utah State Fire Chief meeting was held in conjunction with the league meetings last week, and I was nominated and elected to serve on the Utah State Fire Chief's Executive Board, so I'll have a chance to represent West Jordan throughout the state and take our good ideas to them and bring their good ideas back to us. Thank you.
Way to go, chief. Chief Diamond?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just want to report that we, the Utah Police Officers Association, had their K-9 trials last week. It's an opportunity for the K-9 teams throughout the state to come together and to hone their skills, but also a little bit to show off their skills. We had three K-9s participate in that, and we took 16 trophies out of that, first place, second place, third place trophies. We also won for the teams, second place as a narcotics top agency, and third place for the patrol top agency. So our K-9s are well-represented, very good showing there, again, a testament to the caliber of officers that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start over here tonight with the council comments. Councilmember McCallum?
No, thanks, Matt. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to report that the mayor gave me the opportunity to go and attend award ceremony at West Jordan Elementary School. He explained to me it was called the Lighthouse Award, and I had no idea what he was talking about because we don't have a lighthouse around us, so I Googled it, and it was amazing. It's a global award. 2,000 elementary schools globally applied for this award. It takes two to three years to fill all of the requirements, and it's also called the leader in me. Out of those 2,000 applicants, 140 elementary schools were chosen, and West Jordan Elementary was the one chosen here. And so it was a great honor to see because this took the teachers, it took the students, it took the parents. It was just such a great honor to watch these young people and what they had done. So I'm really happy that the mayor asked me to do that. Secondly, I have had some of the state staff call me on our IT system that seems to keep stopping, you know? And it's been maybe considered that maybe we ought to bring in a consultant to see what the problem is because we can't seem to get this fixed. It's just, it happens over and over and over again, and if we could find out what the problem is, then maybe, you know, our current IT people could keep up to date on that so that we don't continue to have this, continue to be dropping all the time. And that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
I just have one question. Were you a little bit impressed with the children at West Jordan Elementary?
I was very impressed with the children at West Jordan Elementary and very impressed with the teachers. It was really a great experience for me. Also, I get to hand off the football Friday night. I'm scared they're going to ask me to spiral it because I'd kill somebody, but I just have to hand it off to them, so thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Hagan? Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to withhold my comments to the end of the meeting in the remarks section. Thank you.
Councilmember Shawford?
Apologies for being in here. Glad to be here and nothing tonight.
Councilmember Rice?
I have a few things. Thank you, Mayor. I've had some citizens' concerns about a couple of intersections that they feel need additional signaling or stop signs. One is 5600 West, 8200 South. I know that that's in an area that it's got the school right there. Could be other issues, but the other is Jordan Lightning Boulevard and Center View Way. When you turn left from Center View Way onto Jordan Lightning Boulevard, it's a blind left, and a lot of people have left rubber around the ground because they zoom out of there. It's a little bit concerning. Stone Creek, I would like to start having those discussions again about the open space in Stone Creek. I think there are some things we can do to lift its appearance without doing too much, such as putting in the parking strips. And then I've had some residents of Lone View asking me, Lone View is part of the Highlands Assessment Area, what options they have for, if they decide that they would like to have additional playground equipment or any additional amenities, what options do they have to bring that forward to the city in order to make that happen for them since they are paying for it anyway? So if we can look into that. I don't think that was originally put in the agreement, so thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to express, city manager and myself were able to attend a meeting today at the Salt Lake Board of Realty where we were invited to showcase our city, along with two other cities that are neighbors to us, and I know there were many staff that worked on our presentation, but specifically, I worked with Michael Oliver and Kim Wells. I'm here to tell you that it was head and shoulders above any other presentation that was given today, and it's really breathtaking, the untapped potential that we have with the remaining 6,000 acres left in our city. So if you get a chance to look at that video that they put together, it really, truly is awesome, and I wanted to make sure that you knew about it and the public also knew about how we shine today at that meeting. With that, we will move to citizens' comments. I have one signed up to speak tonight. A reminder, you have three minutes to speak on the subject of your choice. Alexandra Ipremoe.
Mayor and council, I'd like to stop for a minute. Let's meditate. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting? We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governments. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faith, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. I'm still waiting for the council member to apologize for the behavior of that person on April 29th. Throwing pencils and speaking out of turn is not appropriate for a council member. My psychiatrist, my psychologist told me the reason some people don't apologize is because they have such a big ego that they...
Point of order, Mayor. We've heard this same speech, and I'm not going to stand for it anymore. It's a personal attack. We all know who you're talking about. I'm just a...
I'm not allowed to give the name, but I understand I can talk about any item.
It's a personal attack, and we need to move on. Let's not bring this up again, or I will ask to make a motion to have you remove from You can speak. I'm saying don't make a personal attack.
It's not a personal attack. It's, she's, the person was very, very bad, the, her characteristic, the person, I mean the person, sorry, female, male, but anyway, it's how I feel. I'll keep saying it. If you're going to dismiss me, I'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and be dismissed. But I'm not saying who the person is. I'm saying a member, a council member, that behaved badly on the 29th. A lot of people behaved badly that night, believe me. So I'm not giving any names, but anyway, I'm really disgusted with my council member. You know, I've asked this council to please have ordinances on campaign signs that are being placed illegally. I contacted the council member, and still the sign is illegal. That council member is also running for an incumbent. Placing signs on Rocky Mountain Power poles is not acceptable, not at all. And I called, and they're going to have it taken down. I'm not taking it down, but Rocky Mountain Power plus the transmitter. I'm asking you again, do not put up illegal signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public question to address at this time? Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Gettigaynor 1229 West, 8450 South, speaking as a citizen tonight. Mark reminded me that I probably ought to let the council know I also serve the state of Utah in the governor's appointment on the state's drink, safe drinking water board. I am now vice chairman of that board and often chair of the meeting for the chairman. We have $53 million of federal money that we loan out. We either give as hardship grants or we give as low-cost loans for water projects throughout the state of Utah. We have currently $17 million available for loans, grants, and hardship cases. Obviously, most of this money goes to smaller communities within our city, but we do have a rating for any project that comes in. We also set all of the regulations for new construction and safe drinking water throughout the state of Utah. I'm pleased and happy to serve on that committee and kind of unprecedented because they did change the structure of the committee and I was reappointed. The vice chairman's responsibility of that committee is over the finances, and it scares me sometimes, but I hope that I can represent city of West Jordan as well as the state of Utah. I'm honored to have this governor's appointment to be able to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. State your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilor. And my name is Yuri Yudin, and I'm living in Salt Lake City, Utah. It's 475 East, 900 South. And the reasons that I came, I have a civil rights issue with Jordan School District, and I know that city council can have certain influence over water education of Jordan School District. Last year, I worked as a teacher in physics in Bingham High School, and administration of Bingham High School literally victimized me for my accent. My vice principal, he admitted my knowledge, by knowledge-wise, I was the best teacher in physics. And at the end of the first quarter, my students at Bingham High, they reached success at the test in about 80% of success. But several students, they were unhappy with my accent. They blamed, they do not understand physics because of my accent. And administration of high school, Bingham High School and Jordan School District turned my life literally in nightmare. They blamed me for wrong enunciation, it's derogatory remarks. And finally, they dismissed me to teach with another teacher who continuously mocked my language at the presence of all classroom and even at the presence of Vice Principal General Lee Taylor. And she characterized his behavior when I addressed his behavior, that he mocked my accent, that he was just goofy. But however, no administration of Bingham High School did not address this properly and even Jordan School District did not address this issue. Moreover, they, this severe prejudice, we started evaluation process. They asked me to move from class, one classroom to another classroom, to carry all my equipment from one classroom to another classroom. They made me to teach with teacher who actually broke all my rules and expectations. He allows student to bring food, beverages, to do home, side homework on my lesson. And this was in time of evaluation. And of course, evaluation came a little bit afoul on the class management because several students were off task, but it wasn't my fault. And finally, they did not renew my contract. And my contract has not been renewed, not on the basis of any disciplinary issue, not on the basis of my performance, but on the entire prejudice. At present time, Jordan School District continue giving to me unfavorable, to continue give unfavorable references to my potential employers. And I just respectfully ask, as you have influence on the Board of Education, Jordan School District, President, Mrs. Palzifer, they just continue discriminate me because they don't wanna adjust my record to, don't even give me a possibility resignation. And-
Sorry, you're gonna have to finish your time as it expires, so, I apologize. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close the citizens' comments and move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Nichols, move to approve. Second?
I have a, my last one, can you say? I need to pull B, mostly to postpone it. There are changes that have been requested from the Board of the Commission again, so, it'll need to be pulled.
Item B?
B, yeah.
So, move to approve except B. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Southworth. Discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Conahay?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 8A, received public input and considered for approval ordinance 15-28 regarding a rezone of approximately 738.694 acres from public facilities PF Zone to ASP Airport Special Purpose Zone for South Valley Regional Airport property located at 6200 South, 7800 South Airport Road. David O'Keefe?
Yes, this item has been, was approved back on October 22nd, 2014. This just incorporates that language into the, to the plan.
Any questions? We already passed. We'll now open the public hearing portion of item 8A. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on item 8A? Now would be the time. Please.
Yes, how does this affect the residents that live there, right along the road behind, or to the east of the road?
On the east side of-
Yeah.
The airport?
Mm-hmm. They're back here. Oh, sorry, my name is Mason Taylor. I live at 4201 West Red Orchard Way. I'm right there to the east of the airport. So, how does this affect the residents that live to the east of the airport?
Well, I believe that, I would, I'll turn this over to the, please, David?
Thank you. It should have no effect. Everything will remain basically the same. This, this designates a certain zoning as to how it can be looked at in the future, but for the benefit of the residents, there will be little if any change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please?
Good evening. My name's Mark Panis. I live at 2583 Marion Drive in West Jordan. I'm also a pilot, believe it or not, and use that airport quite frequently. So, I guess I'd be curious, because the information that we had received in the mail hasn't talked much about what the purpose of the rezoning is. So, I guess that's what I would ask, is if you would maybe take the rest of my, my three minutes here and give me a synopsis, if you would.
We've got Scott Langford here that can answer any specific questions.
So, last, last fall, the council created the text for this special airport zone. Before, well, as it currently sits today, it's Zone PF, which is public facilities. And it's a really big, wide encompassing zone that includes a lot of uses that really aren't that compatible with an airport or airport uses. And it served its purpose for a number of years and as we've worked with, with the Airport Authority, we've, we work together to kind of narrow down those, those potential uses that could be placed there. I mean, right now, the public facilities includes, you know, things like cemeteries and, and things that just really don't fit with an airport. So, this is just a chance to narrow down those uses, make it more applicable to what you see currently and support the future success of that airport, so.
So, then the rezone was worked in, in cooperation with the Airport Authority then? Okay, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing of item 8A. To the council for a motion before discussion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. And very much appreciation to Scott and David for adding their comments to the questions. The one thing I wanted to also bring out was, there was a meeting prior to this one with the Planning Commission where somebody asked the same question. Some of the things that were hit on in that meeting were also pretty concise, right in line with this, but one of the things they pointed out was, as we heard from Scott, their use is allowed for a public facility zone that aren't, that don't correlate with aviation. For example, hospitals can be placed in public facility zones. You have issues with the height and some of the different restrictions that can go on there, whereas it's not allowed in an aviation zone. They try and tailor it down to things that are more aviation-focused and aviation-centric to better ensure the public safety. And they also did point out that they did work with, actually, Alan McCandless, planner and environmental specialist for the Department of Airports was there, working with staff, speaking to the Planning Commission at the time. So, based on the information from the staff report, if there are no other comments or questions, I'm prepared to make a motion. And I would move that we approve, sorry, what was the number? Ordinance 15-28 as presented.
Second?
A motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion? Councilmember Southworth?
Just a real quick question. I, I think the implication of, of the question the gentleman was, that just came up was, are we protecting the integrity of the airport as an airport? And I think it's safe to say that we have, I think, three pilots on the council who look out for those interests, so, if that puts you at ease in any way, then that helps, hopefully.
Councilmember McConaughey?
I would rather fourth. I believe we have a city manager who is also a pilot as well.
I would state that I'm not currently anymore.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll just call it half, three and a half. You've got more pilots in the room than attorneys. I don't know if that's good or not, but, there you go.
I would state that I believe that this zoning allows for the, the long-range plan of the airport has always been on the eastern side for aviation-related development and this will narrow the scope and, and make it more possible to that 130 acres that exist adjacent to the airport on the east side. And we look forward to moving on that, so. I will be supporting the motion.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Public hearing item 8B, received public input and considered for approval ordinance 15-29 regarding a rezone of approximately .3 acres from RR1A, Rural Residential, to SC1, Neighborhood Commercial, and .7 acres from RR1A to R110D, Single Family Residential, 10,000 square foot lot, minimum size. David?
Yes, Mr. McCandless is here for any questions.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Hagan?
Do I have a presentation or just question?
I'd be happy to just give you a real little overview.
You can see my maple tree right there, right behind that. I have a couple of questions. So, the front part of this property is already zoned commercial, am I right?
The front, no, the entire, this is the zoning map. The front part of the property is all our rural residential, the entire piece. The request is to rezone it so that the front part of it is similar to the, the property, the SC1, property to the north, and then to rezone the back half of the property, the back portion of the property from RR1A to R110D.
And is this, you know, general plan to be a neighborhood?
We envision at some point, and we go back to the, to this slide, as you can see just to the north, north of this, there's a lot of kind of undeveloped property. We anticipate that, you know, at some point, these uses will probably transition just because of the nature of Redwood Road, it's a busy street. So, we see that there'll probably be businesses along that, that frontage. But the back, you've got a lot of homes that are kind of surrounding it on the south and west sides, but there's a lot of undeveloped property in the back. And so, we just thought that by rezoning the back part of the property, it would just be a natural extension of that R110 zoning. So, at some point, maybe a developer comes in and picks up these pieces that are to the rear of the, the property and then assembles, assembles those and then makes it into some meaningful subdivision development.
So, so, now, see, it's all my neighbors here in the public hearing. This is my neighborhood, so that's why I have a lot of questions. I'm pretty sure when Mayor and Councilman South were passed this, that was all commercial from a long river road and you're saying it's not.
Correct. There, there is a strip to the north that is commercial, oops, wrong way.
So-
This, this area that's SC1.
It was not zoned.
There was just, for some reason, that lot was not, was not zoned. We do have, Scott brought up a, a point is that this is our future land use map and the frontage of the property is slated for, for neighborhood commercial. The back part of it is, is for residential.
Well, you know, disclaimer, it's my neighborhood, so, you know, I'm gonna be voting on this, but I'm not making any money. It'll probably actually cause, cause me to lose money on the house, on value, because most of these, these homes over here in the Cajun area that you're proposing are 13, I think they're 13 to 14 size homes, the bigger size homes. So, you're suggesting we go down in size of home here or higher density?
No, it's, it's going to the R110. See, you're talking about here on the south side, it's R110F, so it's a little larger, so it's a little larger homes than the D-size homes. But we thought that it would, that this property would be more, better linked with the property that's to the north that's already R110D. And so, that's why we recommended that.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't have a comment for Ray. I was just slow on the trigger and I wanted to put out a disclaimer that the applicant is a friend, but I can remain objective in this issue and I just wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if I should have waited for that to the public hearing. When I first went through my agenda, I was concerned because I thought that's an awful small piece of property to build houses on. So, I did make an appointment and come in and talk with Ray and he explained to me that everything to the north of that, that is vacant, is R110 and the property that's developed to the south of it is R110. They couldn't possibly use that small piece of property without combining it with other properties around it. So, at this time, it would still remain vacant until it could be combined and made large enough in order to subdivide. And I felt better about it after talking with Ray that that's what would happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hagan?
Has this business already moved into this location?
My understanding is that it has.
Yeah. Do they have a business license?
That I do not know. The applicant is here and can address that.
Well, we have to have a public hearing, so.
We'll wait till the public hearing and then you'll get a chance to speak, thanks. Any other questions for Ray at this point? Okay, thank you, Ray.
Thanks.
We'll open the public hearing item 8B. If you're here to speak on this subject now would be the time. You'd be allowed three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name's Kit Erickson. Address is 8732 South Redwood Road. The property, because the, the property sits next to other properties that are all zoned commercial and on the future land use map, it shows as commercial, we were led to believe that it was already commercial. So, we set up business based on that. We went to get all the permits that we needed. We learned that it was not, but by that point, I had already lost or given up my lease at our previous spot. So, yeah, the business is there now. It was entered with good faith, but it's not zoned commercial. I, I'm not sure why that didn't happen. It's like, say, it's on the future land use map, it just didn't ever get rezoned. So, we're doing that as quickly as we can. I have turned in an application for a business permit and that is pending your approval.
Anything else I can answer for it?
Any other question? Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, you indicated that you, you're pursuing a, an application now, but you did have an established business with an, with an existing license previously?
That's correct. So, my, my business has been in West Jordan for the past 12 years. I've had a business permit that entire time. Yeah, we're just moving from one location to another. Thank you.
I have one question. So, you know, I, 'cause you're my neighbor.
Please.
I don't think there's a problem with you locating there. What I'm concerned about is really what's gonna happen to the back part of the lot. Are you, are you the owner of this property?
I am. I am the owner of the property. I have no plans for the back of the property. As far as I can see for the foreseeable future, it's going to remain as it has been for the past million years.
So, I'll wait to ask the staff, but, you know, you're welcome to our neighborhood.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
I'm just more concerned about what's gonna happen to Cajun neighborhood, which are all my neighbors and Jewish neighbors, so.
Yeah, and, and I can commit to you that any development that happens there in the future would be, you know, my neighborhood too. So, you know, nothing's going to happen there that isn't going to benefit me as much as you. there that isn't going to benefit me as much as you. So, that would be done very cautiously, but that is not in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Anyone else wish you to address the council on this item, public hearing item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return to the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Southworth?
I'm ready for a motion if, if that is appropriate at this point.
Well, that would be in order. That would be in order.
Okay, I will move to approve ordinance fifteen dash two-nine as presented.
I have a motion by Councilmember Southworth, and a second by Councilmember Hansen. Discussion of the motion, Councilmember Hagan?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, I'm not opposed to this zone, I would like just have amendments stating that we have some kind of conditional, you know, future agreement for the use of that property, that there's nothing stopping another council from coming back and rezoning it again. This has been rezoned a good five, three times, so, as I prepare. Can I amend the motion and put in a conditional use?
Would you amend your motion, or?
You, you know, as I consider that, I'm not sure, no, I would not, and here's the, here's the reason why, Councilman, as I look at the, the existing zoning, all of it comes up to this one lot and stops, and it just, it makes a lot of sense to continue that on through this one last lot, that doesn't, there are still a lot of steps that have to go through, through development, and a lot of public process that has to take place, and so there, there will not be anything that comes that you or your neighbors are not keenly aware of well in advance. But based on the existing, this is an island in the middle, this does, rural residential in the middle of all this does not belong, and just for those facts alone, I would stick with the original motion, and I guess you're welcome to make a substitute motion if you have a second for that, but, but I, I think we should stay with what we have.
Well, I'm sad that my neighbors aren't here, and, because I think they'll probably find out from, but I, I think I'm opposed to this, just because I, I have a fear that it's just gonna, I've seen this evolve and change, I mean, we have Golden Corral, that when I first moved in, we were supposed to have a nice, beautiful neighborhood there, and we compromised with the developer, and they still ended up in all my neighbors' backyards, and so that's my concern, is if this commercial grows, and I want commercial on Redwood Road, if that grows into the corner of all our, our backyards, you know, it devalues our property, and so I'm going to vote against this motion, I don't see any disclosure other than, you know, it's where I live, so, if we can, I'd like to see, you know.
Just to make it clear for the public, this council or no council could ever make a, put in place something that couldn't be changed by a future council. Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Yes.
Mayor Rahl?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes six to one in favor.
Business item nine A, discussion and possible action regarding storm drain master plan. Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to preface, the next two items are utility master plans, they've been presented to you as preliminary plans, there is still a public hearing that has to happen for each one of these master plans. The public hearing for the stormwater master plan is scheduled to happen in City Hall on October 13th, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., and after the, after we receive the comments from the public, we will go ahead and finalize the master plan and present again either the end of October or the beginning of November, the final draft of the contract for adoption. So what you see before you is the draft version of the master plan for your acceptance and for your direction to go ahead for public hearings. And, and with that, I'll turn the time over to Greg Poole, who's the engineer that helped prepare the plan.
Welcome, Greg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our charge was to work with city staff to develop a updated stormwater master plan. To do that, we got to simulate a rainstorm over the, over the whole city. If you could go to the next slide, please. I probably am supposed to be able to move that. Thank you. To do that, we used a design storm, it's called the Farmer Fletcher Storm Distribution. It was developed based on data from the Wasatch Front, and includes a, they modeled cloud burst type storms, and, from that, and that's what they were interested in capturing as they looked at those rainstorms, Dr. Farmer and Dr. Fletcher, and at this point, this is the best designed storm distribution that's available to us. It does include a, an intense portion of the storm, like a cloud burst, and that's what we've used to model the, a storm over the city. The rainfall depths are found in NOAA fourteen, NOAA Atlas fourteen, which is an updated version of, based on all the data that's available at this point. The design criteria that was used in developing the storm drain master plan includes control of nuisance flooding up to a 10-year storm event with the criteria that the curb would not be overtopped, and in a 100-year event, homes would be protected from flooding. Using the models that were prepared and the design storm and the criteria, we identified about 50 areas in the city that do not meet the criteria, that do not provide the level of service that was defined. With those problems, we then worked with presenting alternatives to the city staff in, in workshop meetings, where we then prepared alternatives and then selected a preferred alternative for, to provide the level of service defined by the criteria. And that, those projects all totaled, you can see on the table here, $44 million worth of projects, of which about half of that, about $22 million is impact fee eligible. Any questions? I can, obviously, there's a lot of detail in the report.
I, I have one, Greg.
Yes.
On the developer projects, is this, are these projects that will be completed as part of developments, or is this something that the city needs to participate in larger size or oversizing of pipes and storm drain facilities?
It's both, especially out to the west, I'm not sure if I can, to the west area, areas that are not developed at this point, there are some trunk lines that are defined as these properties develop, so for example, if somebody develops up here, they, they'll probably start that, that storm drain, but somebody who's developing down here will need to have that storm drain included in his development. And I believe that the way that you currently work, work through impact fee projects is that a developer's responsible for a certain size of storm drains through his property. If that storm drain needs to be larger to accommodate people to the upstream from him, then that's the impact fee part.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you. Just a quick question on?
Yes.
It looks like you've got the red and blue lines, city pipe project in red, developer pipe project in blue. When you say there's about half of the total cost that's available for impact fees, does that break down pretty evenly between the red and the blues, or can those, are those impact fees spread across? What I'm trying to get at is, can you use impact fees for the impact of new development at higher elevations as that water moves down?
Right, and, and you're very, most of those impact fee available are actually on the west side in most of the undeveloped area. The existing developed areas are where the red ones are, where we're, where we're trying to take care of existing deficiencies, and there is not, not new development that's really impacting those, or proposed development.
Okay, and, and that's kind of the, I guess, corruption of my question, does new development create an impact downstream that can be justified through the use of impact fees? It sounds like maybe no, we're gonna have to find a different funding source for that.
Right, right. The red, the red, the ones that are shown in red up here, for the most part, very little of, of those projects are impact fee eligible, because there's no new, no new development that's, this time proposed. I suppose if there was redevelopment that happened sometime in the future, which would be a big change from your zoning.
Okay, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Greg? Looks like you're good.
Thanks, Greg.
What actions do we need to do tonight, since we have a public hearing coming forward here in the near future, and what, what was staff looking for tonight?
Mayor, thank you, we're, we're looking for preliminary acceptance of the draft plan and direction to move forward with the public hearing and to bring back the final for adoption.
So moved? Second, we have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion?
Was that a motion from Mr. Stoker, or?
That was my motion, I just.
To accept the draft preliminary plan, whatever you want to call it, the, the draft plan as presented, and direct staff to move forward with the public hearings that's also included in the package.
I have many comments on this particular item, but I'll wait until public hearing. I still would, I believe that my advice to staff is to start looking at, at bond being prepared for 2016. Hopefully, the interest rates are still where they are today. Let's vote.
Mayor Rahl?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Item nine B, discussion and possible action regarding the secondary water master plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard Noble of Hanson &amp; Lewis prepared the secondary water master plan, but is away on business, he's out of state, and asked that I give the presentation for him. For the secondary water master plan, the city has gone through two previous studies, both in 2001 and 2006. Each of those plans went forth with budget and facilities, and as late as 2006, the plan was adopted, but the council at that time decided not to move forward with implementing the master plan. It is common that we update these utility plans every five to 10 years, and so we contracted with Hanson &amp; Lewis to provide the secondary water master plan and updated the 2006 version. The plan that they provided was available to you, includes discussion regarding source water, where potential source water could come from, and then along with two different On the master plan, what they did when they started looking at the secondary water master plan, they decided to focus on low-density residential, very low-density residential and parks as potential candidates for secondary water. As they developed the plan, they created two different alternatives. The first alternative includes a full build-out of all of the subdivisions, subdivisions that include dry pipe systems, as well as all of the low-density and very low-density areas in west of 4,800 west that could be developed to receive the secondary water. Alternative one includes all of that, includes the dry pipe systems and the undeveloped areas. The key things to take away from this is, is that it provides, the, the plan provides service to 2,586 irrigable acres of land. The, with that comes 9,822 service connections for an amount of about 7,800 acre feet, that equates to 2.3, 2.53 billion gallons of water in a year. To put that in perspective, in the year 2014, the city used 6.8 billion gallons of water, of culinary water, across the entire city in the year 2014, so this represents about 35% of our current water usage. The total build-out for this particular alternative is $67 million, $67.2 million, but a good portion of that is this pipeline right here that runs up 70th South from the wa, the wastewater treatment plant. It adds in a tertiary filtration system of the effluent that comes out of the treatment plant, and then it puts in a pump station and a reservoir and pumps the water up 70th South up to 40th West to the reservoir and ponds that we use for the soccer complex. That particular phase right there is one of the last phases in the plan and is $16 million of the total cost. Right now, we're still examining a lot of different sources for water, and so the, the total estimated capital cost of $67 million is what is prepared in the plan, but that number can change as we go forward and try to acquire water sources to complete the plan. Alternative number two is provided in the secondary water master plan is only to provide water to the areas that in, that have dry pipe secondary water systems.
We have a question, real quick.
I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, can you go back one slide to where you were talking about the $16 million for the cost to run that pipe up 70th South? Knowing of the stormwater improvements that are pending for 70th South, is there potential to find significant cost savings by doing this at the same time? Meaning, if we were to, while 70th South is already torn for stormwater, could we put this pipe in there at the same time, and if so, how much of that $16 million would we potentially save?
We've anticipated that. The $16 million is the cost to do it at the same time as the storm drain project.
So if we didn't do it at the same time, how much more work cost?
Approximately $20 million.
Ouch.
That, that $16 million not only includes the pipeline up 70th, but it also includes a pump station, reservoir and treatment facility just down at the wastewater treatment plant, and, you know, we've thought ahead to try to make sure we're doing that at the same time.
Thank you.
To, to go back to alternative number two, this discussion is really just to provide the water to the dry pipe systems that were built around the year 2006 with the last master plan. There's a significantly less number of irrigable acres of land, we're looking at 550 rather than 2,500, and we're only providing 4,000 service connections rather than the, the close to 10,000 service connections for only 1,650 acre feet of water, rather than the 7,800 that we've seen before. This particular alternative includes capital costs of about $16.6 million. So with, with these plans, as I've mentioned before, both this particular plan with the secondary water and with the stormwater master plan, both of these plans were just coming to you for preliminary acceptance. The open, the public meeting for this particular master plan is scheduled next Wednesday in City Hall down in the community room, September 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. After that public hearing, we would gather all of the comments from the public, and then we would incorporate those into the plan. Hanson &amp; Lewis will finalize the plan, and we'll bring that back for final adoption in the month of October. I summarize some of these dates for you. I summarize some of these dates for you. Are there any questions?
Question from council? Since I won't be here next Wednesday, I just wanted to express, I believe that option one, alternative one, needs to be scrapped, but I think we need to do a hybrid of option two. We've discussed several options of water in the future that we can do and I believe that we need to not look at just the areas that have dry pipes, but all new construction that happens on that upper west side and the bench there needs to be addressed and rather than dry pipes, we will start to install pipes that can be serviced in the near future, I believe. So that would be, just so you know, that would be my opinion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Another question for Justin. I was kind of holding off to let him sit down if he wanted, just some comments.
Would you prefer that I sit down or are there still comment questions for me?
Looks like there's one comment left, so I guess you can take your seat.
I don't want to be involved in your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Just some little tidbits. When I see the price tag of option one, I, my reaction is very similar to what you expressed, Mayor. But then I want, it reminds me of something and I wanted to share this with the council so you're privy to this. Jordan Valley Water has been very aggressive in trying to protect our water rights for the future. And right now, a lot of the estimates, I'll try to summarize this, 'cause I could go on for 45 minutes. I'll try to do it in 10 minutes or less. But basically, the projected population is expected to double by 2060 in the state of Utah. And if you think of that in water use, that means our water use is expected to double in the next few years. It's projected as of right now by 2035, Jordan Valley Water will have need for new water supply beyond what we have now. It's not that far out. And as a result, Jordan Valley Water has been very aggressive at obtaining the necessary rights from the Bear River and have been working towards that end, towards bringing water in. And this is, by the way, I need to throw this out publicly. This is not meant to scare anybody. It's just meant, it's meant to talk about conservation, how important it is. So Jordan Valley has been very prepared on the forefront of working with the state to come up with a, with a solution. The solution is 1.7 billion dollars. And that 1.7 billion dollar cost would be fronted mostly by the state as long as the legislature can get on board. But additionally, RP's, when I say RP's, essentially it's the west half of Salt Lake County. It's us, it's our neighbors, South Jordan, Taylorsville, it's West Valley, it's South Jordan, Harriman, Buckdale. These communities, they're on the west of the Jordan River, are all serviced by Jordan Valley Water. Our portion of that project is 336 million, or 386 million dollars, 386 million dollars to bring that in. So when you think of that in terms, when I look at 60 million dollars, that seems like a lot, but when you think of what West Jordan's piece is of 386 million dollars, it's actually in the ballpark. So I don't want to just throw it out. I actually want you to think about that in that the storm drain system, or storm water, rather, I'm confusing everybody, I threw that out wrong. The, the secondary water system, by providing this, it, in my mind, it's going to allow the public the opportunity to conserve, serve more and make this cost that's going to be, come down on us, basically from 2035, we're going to push it back to 2045, 2055 to 2075. The longer we can do that, the better because the cost of that will be pushed out over many more years than what it is. Again, this is not a scare tactic. It's merely the importance, I think the secondary water system is very important. I think this option two is like, absolutely, we need to do it and perhaps in a hybrid, but not be so fast to throw out option one because option one may be our saving grace in 60 years from now. So just to keep that open mind. That's the only reason I throw that comment out. I absolutely think this is something that will essentially make Salt Lake County sustainable. It's my opinion, but I firmly believe that, that by West Jordan taking a part in this actively and being an example to our neighbors to follow suit, it can make a significant impact for the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you. Also wanted to add, when I think about, I think the number was thrown out, 6 billion gallons in 2014 is used in the city of West Jordan. I can't wrap my mind around 6 billion, the number, 6 billion gallons, but that's so much. Think about that and, you know, the costs and I don't know if it's, you know, option two, alternative two, if it's a hybrid, if it's one, I don't know, but, but I do know that it's something we have to look forward to. We've, working on securing water supply and I think that's a very wise decision for the council of today and tomorrow to do for, you know, this city to do today for the city of, you know, in 10, 15, 20 years from now. That is, these are, this is huge and I commend the council. Back in 2006, we put this plan in place, we got the ball rolling, it got stalled, but our intention is, is to get this through and I just wanted to just add another voice of support moving forward because this is so important for the future of the city. If you don't have water, we can't grow. The thousands of acres, the, you know, roughly third of our city that we have left to develop, can't do it without water. So we've got to have it.
I just had one other question. Are most of our dry pipes available to have water added to them now with the contract that we put in place this spring?
Mayor, we've gone forward with the contract that we've done and we're charging the pipes in Jordan Hills villages right now. They, that's six RPZs that we're installing to be able to test out the pipes within the sycamores, the oaks and the maples. As part of the secondary water master plan, we're proposing to install several more RPZs in the future to be able to connect those out to some other neighborhoods that are out there. But the contract right now is only for those three subdivisions.
Okay, thank you. So we still need a motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
I'll defer to Councilmember Nichols. I know he's a little, a little bit passionate about this one.
I was just going to say I move that the city council accept the draft version. We move on as, as the staff's plan with the public meetings.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of the motion? Please.
And just for clarification, I assume that it's kind of a given along with the motion that that also includes direction of staff to proceed with the necessary open houses and public meetings?
Affirmative. Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Business item 9C, discussion and possible action regarding naming of the old library.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to table this item at this time. I've heard from some of the council on names and their, I think it's premature based on, I don't think it's been resolved what the use of the building is really going to be. As far as it's going to be a permanent structure to have performances or is it just going to be a, to store equipment and do practices? I think I put in your box the fire code violations that are part of the building as well and I think I need to have a little time to just determine who's going to be making those payments. Is the city's going to bring it up the code or is it going to come from another source? So I don't want to go down a path that leads me in the one direction that we may have to change or tweak and then you have to explain ourselves. So at this point, I'd rather have it tabled.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yeah, I was actually excited to see this on the agenda. I didn't know we were going to table it, but a lot of people have called me on this, you know, why are you going to name it after the Sugar Factory? But, you know, I think what's important, we don't call it the old library anymore because for us to get grant money and in cultural arts, we have to have a facility. And so even if we didn't want to call it Sugar Factory, we should at least say it's West Jordan's Cultural Center. And then that'll allow us to apply for grants and things like that for the arts, you know, or band and all of them, you know, to utilize it. As far, I just want you to know, my group, which I oversee, all they do is exactly what the council's directed and that is practice in addition. And I know there's some violations of our policy over there right now, but I would, I would recommend the council, we at least name it Cultural Center Building, just so we can start applying for money.
Thanks. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be in favor of tabling this. Some of the names that were suggested, I think would be good for a permanent facility, but there was a lot of conversation when we acquired this, is this going to be the permanent home? Is it, is this going to be temporary? Are we going to turn around and sell this? And where we last left the conversation is this was just a temporary stopover and right now it's going to be primarily by arts, but it was brought up, I believe by Councilmember Hagan, that there might be other groups within the city that have used for the building as well. So for the time being, I wouldn't advocate anything that would pigeonhole this facility just for use by the arts or insinuate that this is a permanent home, rather just something a little bit more generic for the time being. So until we have something a little bit more in line with that thought process, I'd be in favor of tabling.
Councilmember Southworth?
Maybe just a point of clarification, if somebody can enlighten me, I thought any grant that, that we go after now needs an organization like we have. We have an Arts Council, an organization that can go after funding and what have you. Anything for a building, that building, we had decided was not the intended recipient of any significant investment of the city. Really, our intention was, that could change, obviously, but it was to sell and use the proceeds and the ability to leverage those proceeds into other grants to put into a new facility. So I'm a little confused by the comment that we can't get grants, but maybe I misunderstood. Maybe you can clarify for me.
So, yeah, the county has the end of year grant money that they grant to cultural arts. In fact, I think Mr. Stoker went to that meeting for, and I get deadlines every year, but you have to apply for it and you have to have a cultural facility. It can't, has to be something that's used with, for the band, for art, for theater. Right now, the building over there is called the Old Library.
So. Councilmember McConaughey?
Can't get money for something that's not cultural.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can speak to that to some extent because I did also attend the meeting with the county prior to the submission of our grant request. And our grant request was actually for funding to design a new facility and then they have grants that are for facilities as well. Some of the folks that were there, they actually have a pretty broad range of what you can apply for and it seemed like it was more the group, not necessarily a specific facility. The ones that were facility-directed, there was an educational institution that was applying for money from the county. The aquarium was applying for funding. Nothing in the grant that we proposed was tied specifically to what's been referred to up to this point as the Old Library.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you. Just want to finish the rest of that comment. The only, the only, I know this is a lot of discussion for now that it's going to be taped, but the only thing I would say is, is if we put a sign out there, a cautionary note would be to put temporary home in front of anything we put there. And the reason being is when we allowed, the city allowed the arts to move into the Sugar Factory, that was a temporary home. But improvements were made and improvements on top of the improvements and after years and things changed and pretty soon it became institutionalized and that, and it wasn't temporary anymore. And so that's really the concern I have is, is that we keep, we make sure that we remember what temporary, and even if, if you need an example, look at what's happening today in this facility. It's already happening and it's already changing. The use has gone from, well, we won't have performances to, guess what's happening right now? A performance. There are activities taking place that we already said we don't want to take place in there. So it's already happening, so I don't care what name we put on it. Really, I don't, whatever, make it up. Just put temporary home on the very top. Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yeah, just one last thing. You know, I think maybe this is for a discussion for a retreat with some new council members because we get, we went through a process and maybe for the benefit of our new city manager, she go out and got pricing on a cultural center. We even picked a place where we were going to put it, but it was 20 million dollars and...
I'm like, I'm on that, Mayor. I think it was like 7 million.
Oh, 7 million. And so we're still stuck without any cultural facility for our, our residents and for a city of our side, I know, you know, these folks sometimes seem controlling and all that. We just need to develop better policy and have them follow the policy. That's really what's the problem right now. So, but as far as naming, I, I can email you all the packet again. You do have to have a cultural facility and I'll leave them quote Linda Dowling because she used to serve on that board.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Southworth in that a lot of people thought that the Sugar Factory was going to be our cultural hall. They were meant to believe that. They thought that was going to happen and we still to this day have angry residents that that was taken down because our prior council promised them that that would be our, for our third theater group and that didn't happen. And so I think we should let them know it is going to be a temporary situation. Thank you.
I would move that we table this item until a date uncertain, but direct staff immediately to address the small items on the list of the fire, that the fire inspection has addressed so that at least the use that we've approved is done under safety of having fire extinguishers and GFIs and the things that were identified. It's not at great cost. I think we could use council contingency if we need to, to fund that. I guess that's...
Now, second.
That's the...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, please.
And I'm just reading from this, I would imagine you're probably referring to what sounds like ceiling tiles, fire extinguishers, current inspections, exit signs that are illuminated?
Yes.
And covered electrical outlet switch boxes and the electrical room cleared of all storage?
Yes.
So that I think...
And any other items that were, become identified that are a safety hazard?
Okay. Which is not, I think is like not a sprinkler system, but you're just talking about the smaller incidentals?
Yes, that can be done fairly quickly. That would be my motion. Motion by Mayor Raul, second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Formally, I have made a public statement that I would not put a dime into this building only in that I wanted all the money to go to a new building, but I will be supporting this based on the fact that it's for the public safety. I feel that's very important. If the council's going to allow the activity in the building, we better take care of it.
Councilmember Southworth?
If I could direct attention to Chief MacRae, is there anything else that maybe we're missing here that, it doesn't like being put on the spot, right?
I'm assuming you're referring to the inspection report dated 9/22 or what do you have?
Yes, that's the one I was identifying.
Good. And we inspected that yesterday and I think you'll be getting that information. The stuff you talked about, the ceiling tiles, fire extinguishers, a lot of those have been corrected. The real issue gets down to square footage and occupancy load. Fire sprinklers fixes your problem, but that's a big cost. That's another discussion you're going to have to have. So these small items you have on here, some of those have been corrected. The real issue gets down into what is the use for? Is it rehearsal only or are you letting public in there? If you're letting public in, then the occupancy load goes down dramatically because it doesn't have sprinklers. We're talking like 49. So that's going to be the issue to hold performances.
I believe to make it clear that there was clear direction given by this council... time. And I don't think anything's changed that direction, so that is the direction as of today. I would like to talk about this at our retreat in January and see where we go from here, talk about a new facility or additions to this facility, but let's table it for now. Any other comments on that? I just have one.
Just add, since our city manager comes from a large city, perhaps he has some, you know, some information to where we can set up a policy that our residents can follow over there. I think that's what's the problem. I agree with the mayor, but I just, if we can add that and see if we can direct on any direction. So, thank you, Mayor.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Haggin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Vote pass this seven in favor.
Okay, last item, consent item B. Did you say you pulled that?
Pulled until a future date.
Okay.
Okay, final remark. I just wanted to take a moment, I'm going to do my best to keep straight face, but I mixed emotions tonight with Bryce Hadley being his last council meeting. Many congratulations to you. New opportunities are always so exciting, and wish you the best with that. Also sad, me personally, I feel that we've lost a good leader in our city. I personally have witnessed a strong work ethic in that I would call him, this is no joke, I would call, text, email him at any imaginable hour of the night, and he would respond. And we will be missing that. Big shoes to follow, Mark. With that as well, I wanted to let the public know that he was a very strong communicator with me. His communication skill, I always knew that the city was up to, and he had a very open door to provide that information to me. So with that, I really do wish you the very best, you and your family. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I can continue with that thought, I've only been here two weeks, and I've had assistant city managers before, but I certainly would rephrase it at the top with those that I've worked with. I called John Park today, his new boss, and told him he better never set foot in this city again. So he's prepared to greet him accordingly. Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth.
Yeah, to continue with the eulogy, or the roast, whatever it may be, we don't know. Bryce, thank you, thank you to your family, thank you for your service to the city of West Jordan. You will leave a big hole in everything that you've done, is, I have, I can't describe the level of trust that I have with you, and that means a lot to me, because that is how we get things done. You have to have that trust and that level of communication, and it has been top bar my experience in the eight years I've been on the council, that's the pinnacle for me. So I appreciate everything. I, sorry to mark, you're coming in, and now you've got a big hole here onto your left there that you've got to fill right away, but we'll get by that. But thank you again to you and to your family, please pass that along to your family, just as important. Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene the closed session and, no, actually, not if you, reconvene the closed session and adjourn from that meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hanson and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion of motion, see you in a minute. Let's vote.
Councilmember Rice?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Raul?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggin?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote pass this seven in favor.
Five-minute break in between.